Okay, I'd like to call this meeting of October 13th to order. Members of the zoning board of appeals are myself, Joseph Burke, Ned Schmedjik, Frank Donaddle, Wendy Tarver, and Michael Wolf, along with Patty DeCarr from Urban and Economic Development, Dan Coza, Chief Building Inspector, and Kate Hartnett, Assistant Corporation Counsel. We will hear each case individually as it appears on the agenda. When your case is called, please state your name and address for the record. After listening to your proposal, I will ask for speakers for and against the project. All remarks are to be addressed, all remarks and any questions are to be addressed to the members of the zoning board only, and shall be limited to two minutes per person. We will then vote on the project immediately following. Now, tonight, we're gonna just go out of order on the very first case we hear. CBA case number 47-20, 1259 Hammond Ave., applicant Aseem Husak. Pursuant to section 2-9, the applicant is seeking an area variance in order to legitimize the construction of a parking area in the front yard at the above referenced location. Okay. Is the applicant on tonight?
Aseem Husak, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Hello? Aseem, are you?
Aseem, are you there?
You speaking, sir?
Is this Aseem on the line? Aseem, could you please explain to the board what it is that you did and the reasoning? And everybody else, ask that you mute your telephones so that he can speak. Thank you. Go ahead.
Hello?
That's Aseem?
Say that again, ma'am?
Who's speaking now? Who's speaking now? Hello?
My name is Jim Key. I live at 44.
No, we're...
No, we're not on your case, sir.
Say that again?
We're looking to speak to Aseem Husak, 1259 Hammond Ave.
Oh, no, that's not me.
Then please mute your telephone.
Is he on?
No.
He was. Yes, he was.
He's on the list.
Oh, we don't hear from him.
Well, is this in regards to Ben Rowan Road?
No, Hammond Ave. We're speaking on right now.
No, Hammond Ave. 1259 Hammond Ave.
Okay.
Aseem, are you there?
His name is on the list, no?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's showing up as a participant.
Patty, I, uh, I touched...
He's having trouble connecting?
Yes.
Can you ask him to phone in? Use that phone number?
I will.
Patty, we'll give it another five minutes and then we'll go to... We'll go to another case and, uh, we'll come back to him when he gets, once he gets on. Don't you think, or?
Yeah, we can do the first case right now, then.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what you said. I couldn't understand.
You can do the first case.
All right, you want to do the first case now, or just go back to the first case?
160 Deerfield Drive West.
Yep. CBA case number, we're gonna go back to the first case. CBA case number 41-20, 160 Deerfield Drive West. Applicant Emil and Carrie Sharbell. Pursuant to section 2-2967, the applicant is seeking an area variance in order to erect the fence at the above referenced location. Okay, are the Sharbells on?
This is Emil and Carrie Sharbell.
Okay. Go ahead, state your case, please.
Explain to the board what you're looking to do, please.
Okay. We are looking to erect a six-foot fence the side of our house, in the backyard, and partly the other side of our house. It's a six-foot privacy vinyl fence that we're looking to put. Um, we've already had a quote. And we were just... We're on a corner lot. Oh, two of our, the side lawn and the front lawn are considered both front lawns. So we're asking for permission to come in as close as possible to our property on the side lawn.
Okay.
The board, um, if you can see that on your screens, it's gonna come off the front side of the house and come out towards, towards Daziev. And they have to be at least eighteen feet in from the edge of the pavement because that's where the city right-of-way ends. So they can't...
Okay.
...go any further than that on this side of the house. They can't...
Okay.
...towards the street. It has to be eighteen feet in from the edge of the pavement.
All right. Any questions from the board? No questions, board? Okay. Anyone on who's for the project?
I have a question for them.
Yeah.
I don't know if you said from the board or for the board. But, uh, this is Michael Boosman. I, I own...
Are you, are you a neighbor, sir?
I own the property. Yes, sir. I, I own the property at 162 Deerfield Drive West.
Okay.
Um, so that, that short fence on the, on the left side would come in contact with my property. There's, there's already a, a short, chain link fence, a three, three and a half, four feet chain link fence. Is that gonna be affected by this proposed fence?
No, we would be, a few inches on our property. It would be encroachment on our property. We wouldn't come near your fence.
Okay. That was the only question I had.
We would make it a few inches from the chain link fence.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone else for or against? Any motions, then?
Make a motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? All right.
All right.
Okay, Mr. Sharbell, you're all set.
You'll have to...
You need a fence permit, right, Patty?
Hold on one second. You're gonna have to get a fence permit through the codes department. They're not, they're not o-
I already have the paperwork.
Okay, they're not open to the public, so you'll wanna give them a call tomorrow. Okay?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, have a great evening.
Thank you, you too.
Okay, are we going back to, um...
I'm up here.
Okay, go ahead. Go with them, then.
Is that, is Aseem on, or we're gonna go to the next case?
Patty, he's there. Can, can you read it again for us, please?
Yes, I'm here.
The, um, sure. Okay, CBA case number 47-20, 1259 Hammond Ave., applicant Aseem Husak. Pursuant to section 2-2967, the applicant is seeking an area variance in order to legitimize the construction of a parking area in the front yard at the above referenced location. Okay.
Aseem, can you just tell us what you did and why you did that?
Uh, yes, uh, we moved there three months ago and, uh, we have, uh, two SUVs and two pickup trucks and, uh, being parked in the front to the Arthur Street, uh, we are closing sidewalks and the people in the morning jogging and having, uh, exercising and, uh, I've seen people getting from the sidewalk back to the road and back to the sidewalk. So, uh, I decided to, uh, to make a parking which is like have every houses from that, on that side of Hammond Ave. Have a, have a parking space to the Hammond. And, uh, so, uh, being the COVID-19 and stuff like that, it's really hard to connect with anybody. We are, we are in a rush to do it. So, uh, that's why we did it. And, uh, I, I really need a two parking because like two pickup trucks. We are not on sidewalk anymore. We're not, uh, blocking people from the jogging and having exercise in the morning.
Okay, but you already have a driveway, correct?
Yes, but it's too small, too short to be parked for, for, uh, vehicles, which is two pickup trucks.
Well... Did, did, did you check, did you check with anyone? You cut the curb and everything? Okay.
Patty, is this, is this permit consisting of a curb track?
Sorry?
This variance, is this about a curb track?
This is about parking in the front yard.
Okay.
The front yard.
The curb cut. The curb cut variance has to go before the planning board.
Okay, so this is about the parking in front of the yard. Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Questions from the board?
Any questions, board?
Did you, right there that we're seeing, is that the front of his house?
Yep. And then he has that on the side. That's the side street. That's the front. This is what it looks like. Sorry, I'll rotate it.
Looks like, what was it from the neighborhood garage?
'Cause that says 916 Arthur.
You can see the driveway on the side in that.
Interesting.
So he took the tree out?
I don't know how long it's been, the tree's been there. This photo's from 2011.
Right.
Okay, well, I'm sure we got some neighbors out there. Anyone, uh, any comments? Anyone for the project? Okay, how about, uh, anyone against?
I'm against the project. My name is Joe...
Your name?
My name is Joe Prieri. And I own the house at 1245 Hammond Ave. The owner purchased this house a few months back. And as you can see, he already has a used stall garage and a quite large, uh, parking area on Arthur Street. Um, I would have thought that if this house wasn't sufficient with parking, um, that he might have looked elsewhere or thought about widening the driveway that he has now. Um, this is, if you go down through the criteria, uh, this is a self-created hardship. And I think he just took it upon himself to do a curb cut. And this also puts, um, puts a strain on the neighbors across the street. It's close to the corner, so now you have two driveways back to back on corners. And I do believe that this gentleman knows the process that you have to go through and just took it upon himself to cut the curb. And I think this would create a bad precedence if this was approved. I have a situation at my house on Mohawk Street where I own two houses. And, um, one of the houses does not have ample parking for two cars. And I'm in the process of trying to either obtain on-street parking or they're telling me I have to, uh, find another area somewhere else. So I really think this is an eyesore. And, uh, people shouldn't be allowed to just do curb cuts and keep parking around their house.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Prieri. Anyone else against?
I'd like to, I'd like to comment as well.
What is your name?
My name is Joe Caruso.
What's your address?
715 Armory Drive, two blocks away.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, I, I happened upon this, this, uh, project, uh, simply by driving by in the neighborhood and I was really quite shocked. At the time, there were two enormous trucks parked in front of the house on this new driveway pad. And, um, I, I, I was flabbergasted. I couldn't believe that it had been done and that it had been approved and, so, uh, I, I think it does set a bad precedent. I would basically repeat everything that Joe Prieri said prior to me. It does not set a good precedent. It should not have been done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay.
Anybody else against? Would anybody else like to speak in this regard?
Patty, I'm gonna abstain. For the record.
It came in broken up.
It's not, I'm gonna abstain. Did you catch that?
No.
She's gonna abstain.
That, you're going to abstain from voting?
Correct.
Okay, any motions, board?
I make a motion that we deny. This is Frank.
I'll second that motion. All in favor? All right.
Frank? You're going to deny and request?
Okay, I understand.
Frank?
Yes. That could be corrected, so it can't be just like that.
Correct action? Okay.
Yes.
Can you put a date on it for correct action such as replacing the lawn, the grass?
Replacing it actually was prior to the, prior to change.
The grass and the curb.
Grass, the sidewalk and the curb, please.
Yes.
But, Betty, can you?
It's not. Can we get Mr. Zaluzki to mute his phone? He's a gentleman that keeps riding over the conversation.
Hello? Yeah?
See if I can get that, but...
Hello, can you hear me?
It's not showing up.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is on mine, so.
Yeah, this is my first time doing this, so, uh, you need, what, what do you need from me so that I can give you why I'm here?
Who is speaking?
Uh, my name is Jason Cruz, this is in regards to case number four.
Case are you in regard to?
The case number is four five dash twenty.
Okay, we're not there yet?
No, my God, I just want Zaluzki to cancel, she's, her phone down.
Please mute your telephone until we get to that.
Everybody, everybody mute everything. Everyone out there, hold on a minute. Everyone out there, mute your phones till your case comes up. Simple as that.
We mute them?
Yeah.
All right. Frank, go ahead now, you wanna put a timeframe on this?
Um, either thirty or forty-five days, I don't know if we go longer than that, we'll be into snow.
We definitely want it done before the end of the year.
Time's ticking up. What are you putting a timeframe on?
On when to have it?
Restoring the property.
Restoring it back to how it was prior to the change.
Well, I don't think we could tell him to do that.
Yes, you can.
Yes, you can.
Kate just said, yes, you can.
We can't. He's, he's allowed to, to, he's allowed to pave the front yard and he just can't park on it. We can't tell him not to pave the front yard.
Okay.
Okay.
For the curb then.
That, that goes for the planning board.
He can't have the curb cut in the apron if you guys have denied it.
Yeah.
So he needs to replace that.
He needs to replace all of that.
He'll have, if the, the zoning board rejects him, then he has to replace the curb.
No, zoning board has already rejected it.
So he has to replace the curb? Right?
Cause they denied his parking.
So you mean to tell me you can put that much pavement in your front lawn?
Yeah.
So...
Which concrete?
Dan, the zoning board has denied the parking for this house in that location. So, uh, curb cut cannot be applied for without leading to parking.
Right.
Won't need to go before planning board because he has no parking for that location. So he needs to replace the grass in the city right of way and replace the curb.
No, he just needs to curb.
I don't know, Katie, can, Ms. Artnick, can you weigh in on this? It doesn't sound like he should be able to do this, he's gotta shut the curb, give us it right of way back, yada, yada.
Dan, what's your basis for saying he doesn't have to plant grass?
That's engineering, Andy Karas, the engineering department says he can pave it, not me, I'm not the one saying he can. Andy Karas says he can pave, he just can't park on it, he, the only thing he would have to do is replace the curb.
Everyone, the zoning board has directed that this property is restored to its previous appearance in, in accordance with the zoning code. And I believe that that is what has to stand.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
I did, this is Mike Wolf weighing in, I believe that the precedent here is what we have to be concerned with. If anybody can go out, cut the curb and change a property, it's not fair to the residents or the neighbors, they have to follow the code.
I understand that, I'm dealing, I'm dealing with about five of them right now. Five, five of properties and they're, they're allowed to pave the city right of way, but not cut the curb.
What sense?
Does it?
I don't know what sense it makes, I'm just saying that's what I was told from the engineering department, that they can black top concrete.
Dan, does, Dan, does the right of way go all the way to the house? To the house?
No, the right of way is firmly between the sidewalk and the curb.
Okay, but it's, you, the sidewalk to the house.
We put that much concrete in front of your house? You can't, I, I don't see how that can be.
Okay.
I mean, I'm, I'm wrong, I mean, I'm wrong, but I...
Hold on, hey, listen.
I...
Start net again, listen, it is so far as Mr. Husak violated the zoning code, all right? This board has the authority in denying the area variance requested, this board has the authority to direct the property to the way it was before. If that is the motion on the table, you know, you should vote on that. Um, I have not spoken with Andy Karas about any of this, um, I know that, you know, Dan works closely with them, but for right now, the zoning board, this is their decision and
Correct.
If it's going to go any further, it will go to the courts, okay?
Thank you, Katie.
And, and don't forget to add a date that anything needs to be done by, so.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last part.
So we have a motion on the table by Frank Denso to deny the, the request and to replace the grass, sidewalk and curb as previously, uh, was there before. Do I have a second?
I second.
Do we have a date to, to have this replaced?
Say forty-five days? If that sounds reasonable. We want to be at least reasonable about it, not have it go on too long, but enough time to do it.
How much time did you say?
Forty-five.
Forty-five days? Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, wa, wa, was there granite curving there? Beforehand?
It'll have, in, in accordance with codes.
Okay. Okay.
What's the date be?
All in favor?
Forty-five days, you wanna make it November thirtieth, Frank?
That's good.
What's that?
November thirtieth.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Wendy?
I agree.
Okay. It's all set, it's denied, forty-five days. Everything needs to be replaced that previously was before. Moving on to the next case.
ZB A case forty-two dash twenty, twelve ten Hillview Drive. Applicant Samir Sabanadik. Pursuant to section two dash two-nine sixty-seven. The applicant is seeking an area variance in order to construct the garage at the above referenced location. Samir, you there?
Uh, yes, yes, I'm here.
Okay, good, okay.
Okay, sorry about, um, Hillview Drive, just a moment. So this gentleman is looking to build a garage where that trailer is.
Okay.
Eric, do you just wanna explain to the board what it is that you're looking to do?
Uh, yes, I'm just trying, uh, to build a garage so that I can store, store my tools and, uh, and, um, my equipment, you know, truck and the trailer and nothing special about it, just twenty-eight by thirty garage so that I can park in the truck and the trailer and, uh, store whatever additional equipment and stuff that I have, I have.
As you can see, it's thirty by twenty-eight garage, five aside property line, uh, significant room from the rear. Now, Samir, how far? You'll be going like five feet from the edge of that fence, is that right?
Um, yeah, about eight feet from that, from the, where the white fence is inside of the fence, about eight feet.
Okay. And you're not gonna be, um, doing another curb cut, you're gonna utilize the same one?
Yes, I'm gonna probably just extend the driveway, so I'll be getting in the same way and just making it to the right, to the new garage if I get approved. Just extend, extend existing driveway a little bit to the right.
But not the curb cut?
No, not the curb cut, yeah, I don't have to, yeah, cause it'll be too, it'll be too huge driveway.
Yes.
Okay. All right, according to the application, you're gonna match the house with the siding and the roofing?
Yes, yes, I'm gonna go with, yes, same siding, same, yeah, I'm gonna pretty much match everything, the windows and everything else. And the garage doors too.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
No.
No.
Anyone out there for the project? Against? Okay, any motions?
I'm gonna make the motion approved.
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, Samir, you're all set?
Joe, hold on a second, who made the motion? I couldn't hear, who made the motion?
Yeah, Ned, right?
Yes.
Yep, Ned.
Who seconded?
I did.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, make sure you get a, a permit codes, okay?
Okay, yes, I'm gonna call codes department, yes, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, ZB A case forty-three dash twenty, thirteen fourteen Rutter Street. Applicant Ronald Sperry. Pursuant to section two dash two-nine sixty-seven. The applicant is seeking an area variance in order to construct a shed at the above referenced location.
Yes, this is, uh, Ron Sperry. Hello?
Yes.
I can hear you, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I'm, uh, looking to get a variance to, uh, construct a twelve by seventeen shed on the property. So...
So, um, if you're looking at the house, it's on the right-hand side, correct?
Uh, yeah, if you're looking at the house, it's on the right-hand side.
Hard to tell from these photos.
So where are you gonna put this shed, I mean, are you gonna remove some trees?
Well, if you're, if, if... Yeah, we're gonna, well, we're not removing any trees, there's a couple, there's a couple of little bushes, if you got the pictures, that we're just gonna remove. So the trees are staying, uh, so you can see where the bump out is on the house, it's gonna be on that flat wall in that area there.
On the second photo near the garbage can?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
How close to the building are you gonna be?
Pardon me?
How close to the house?
I, I didn't hear you.
How close to the house will the shed be located?
Right next to it.
Right next to it.
How close?
Yeah.
How close?
Well, right, right, it's gonna be right buttoned up against it.
So it's gonna be an addition? Oh, oh, open the mic.
So Dan, is there, uh...
Addition, is, if it, is if it's coming off the house, it's an addition, right?
Addition.
Well, it's just gonna be a shed, I mean, it's not gonna be attached, it's gonna be right next to it, so whatever you consider.
How close, give me a, a number, how many feet, how many inches?
Z, uh, zero inches.
So then it's an addition?
Well, whatever.
He's not attaching it to the house, he's not...
Yeah, I'm not gonna attach it to the house, it's just gonna be buttoned up against it, it's not gonna be nailed to the house or anything like that.
So it's gonna be a freestanding shed, Dan?
Freestanding shed, it's the house, okay?
Can he do that?
Two questions, um...
This is Mike weighing in, I think the proximity to the house is gonna dictate what can be in that shed. You don't want slamables or lawn mowers or anything like that in there if you're sitting right next to the house.
Yeah, when, then the customer's not gonna do any of that, they have a, they have a, another, a home in another, uh, state that they're selling and they need to have a, you know, an area to put some stuff, so that's what that's...
So it's storage, it's a storage shed?
Yeah.
Did you really open it to any of the side?
The height's about fourteen foot four.
Uh, uh, aesthetically speaking, I mean, what's taking a boom for the, for the neighborhood? Thank you.
Well, you, you can see it, you can't, you can't see it from the road or anything, it's so far set back. You're only gonna see it from the one neighbor's house where you can see that wooden fence. So you're not, you're not gonna see it.
How close to that fence is the shed gonna go to?
Gonna be about ten feet away from that fence.
You're at fence.
Why do you need a shed that's so high, so tall?
Because they wanna store some stuff and then they've got a piece of equipment or a piece of, their son built a chariot, if you know what a chariot is, and they need to store it in there. And it needs to be that high, so...
Is this going to be on the driveway, partially on the driveway?
No, it's on the other side of the driveway, the other side of the house.
In that one drawing, it looked like it was on the driveway.
No, but if you're looking at the house from the front, the driveway's on the left-hand side.
Oh, they're putting it right here?
The driveway's on the left side?
It's here, shut here, twelve by seven. Shed.
What's, what's that structure towards the back?
What's that?
Drive, and what we're looking at right now, the driveway's on the right side.
Well, you mean on the, the side lane?
Yes.
Excuse me, this is a photo, this is just a drawing and it comes with the application, you modify it for your house.
Okay.
Just an example for them to use, however, he used it as his drawing.
Okay.
Seventy-six feet off the sidewalk. It's gonna be rated properly if it's that close out, if it's more than three feet.
There's specific regulations, Dan?
Uh, it's, depending on how close that building's gonna be, it's, it's gonna determine how, what he's gonna have to build it out of, it's gonna have to be rated in some manner. The, the fire rating on, on either the house, the shed or both. And it will depend on openings, if there are any windows or doors within so many feet proximity to this new freestanding shed.
Did you hear that, Mr. Sperry? Did you hear that, Mr. Sperry?
Yes, I did. So you had, we, if that was near the house, we'd have to fire rock the wall that's adjacent to it, is what you're saying to me?
You, you may have to. I'm not in my office right now. I don't know. When you bring the plans in to, to obtain a permit, we can determine that.
Okay.
Any other questions, board?
Well, my concern is it's a massive shed for a, a temporary period that something's going to be stored in. I, I don't see this thing being stored there forever. So I, so I'm just trying to, you know, what do you do with, with structural that big next to your house? Long term is my concern.
I, I'd personally like to see more specifics. I mean, openings, how you get in the shed, the wall to the house. Again, it concerns me, the proximity, simply because of fire code or whatever we're dealing with. But we got to treat this thing as a garage if it's going to be that close to the house. We have to make sure it's rated at the very least.
He'll have to through that through codes, Mike.
All right, all right. So Danny will handle it if we approve it?
If it's approved, that, it'll all be handled with an, any other kind of process.
Okay.
He won't be able to get a permit without having all of that.
All right, very good, very good.
You're just, you're just approving the size and the location.
Okay.
Now, how much room does he have there to the fence or the property?
From the house to the fence?
Yes.
22 feet.
And you're coming out, what, 12?
Yeah.
Just leaving what, another 10 feet left? Okay.
Right.
I mean, I agree with him. You know, I don't think you're going to notice this thing from the road, you know. I, I know the house. I mean, I'm right around the corner and there's quite a few trees and bushes there that you really can't even tell the house almost, not to mention this thing. So. Well, like I said, my long term, long term is what my concern is. Let's say he sells the house and somebody decides to cut all this down. All of a sudden, you got this master structure on the side of the house that doesn't fit what you think.
What happens when the chariot's gone?
Right.
Well, I don't think the chariot's going to go anywhere.
Uh, I don't, I don't, I don't see how that's going to fit in, but was, anyone, anyone here for the project? Any against?
What do you plan on finishing it with? Do you got like a, the diagram of the roof, the finishes of it or?
Well, I will if I get the variance. You got to have that for building code, don't you?
Well, I'd like to see what the aesthetics look like, at least. I mean, I'm not looking at.
It's going to have, it's going to have the same type of siding as the house and a roof.
It will.
Like a shed roof or a, you know, gable roof or?
No, just a shed type of roof.
Mr. Sperry, did you say what style of roof?
It's just going to be a shingled roof, but a shed type of roof.
Usually something of this size, we, we'd like to get an idea of what it's going to look like before we approve or deny. And right now, we, we don't have anything other than where you want to put it.
Maybe we should table it until we get some plans of exactly what it's going to look like.
Well, I mean, if he's going to side it to match the house, I mean, I, I'd say I can envision that, but except the, the size of the structure was my little concern, but long term, but what kind, what type of floor are you going to put in? A concreted or?
No, it's just going to be a plywood floor.
Plywood floor.
What about the door?
Yeah. It's going to be a steel door.
An overhead door?
No, no, personnel door.
I'm sorry, you might explain what a chariot is.
You ever watched the movie Ben Hur on TV? No? For real, back in the Roman days, that was their way of getting around. Yeah, I know. Sounds good where the son built it in an engineering class. And they need to store it out of the, out of the weather.
How's he going to get it?
Get it in there?
How, yeah.
Well, it comes apart, it comes in sections.
Wow, they take the wheels off.
I know, I know.
Like the horse racing at Vernon Downs, only though a bigger.
Well, that, that, no, that's a sulky.
I know, I know, but this is a bigger version of a sulky. It's more.
Yeah, kind of, yeah, kind of.
Okay.
Okay. All right, any motions?
If he says, you know, if he does everything he said, I, I would make a motion to approve it.
I, we got to make, you're going to have, you have to side this and put a nice roof on there. I mean.
Yeah, I will. That's the intention.
It has to match the house. So, you know, it, it really needs to be, look like part of the house, uh, that's.
No problem. That's what the plans are.
My teeth with surgical precision.
Second up.
I want to second this one.
All right, go ahead, Mike.
Thank you, buddy.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Please do what you said you're going to do though, sir.
I will, I will.
Okay.
I'll take the blue department tomorrow.
All right.
I'm sorry to interrupt on the all in favor. Can we do that one more time? All in favor?
All in favor, aye.
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 Ned?
Yes, I.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next case.
ZBA case 44 dash 20, 1407, 1417, 1419, Dudley Ave. Applicant John and Alicia Crosby pursuant to section 2 dash 2967. The applicant is seeking an area variance in order to legitimize the installation of a fence at the above referenced location.
Mr. Crosby, are you there? Mr. and Mrs. Crosby?
Second floor square. This one with the big wooden fence is out there now?
Yep.
Oh, yeah. More square and, yeah, there it is. Oh boy. It's huge. Does it come with four lots?
Yeah, it's quite a few lots. I'll show you. Go back.
Seven lots.
Wow. Wait, everything in black is where he put a fence around?
Well, he has a fence um, along the Brinkerhoff side already. And then he took these lots here. You can see his house is down here. I don't know if you can see my pointer or not, but his house is down, is here. Here. And then he went and put fence along these lots. And down this way. He went ahead and did that. But it, and his house is down here, but he owns all of these lots. And these are the lots towards Brinkerhoff are already fenced.
As in, you were fenced in when he purchased it or just he fenced in those? Or is he wanting to fence in?
It's an older fence, I believe.
Okay.
I'm trying to see if I can see a photo.
I think he had, she had part of it.
This is his house and that's the style of fence that he has at the other location.
Right. Now, the red fence was already up, Eddie?
Yeah, I believe so. Yeah, the red fence was already up. Sorry.
That's six foot tall. That seems tall.
That's how high the fence is. It's a six foot.
It's six foot?
Yeah.
Wow.
I believe so. That's what the applicant stated, but I don't know what you guys want to do since the applicant is not in attendance. You usually.
That's us table it.
Yeah, we got to give him.
You usually cable it.
He's got a lot of money invested in that fence.
Yeah.
Cable, second.
Cable it.
Aye.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, ZBA case.
I only heard two of you.
Aye.
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 Thank you. So if anybody was, was here to speak in regard to that fence that has been tabled to allow the applicant an opportunity to speak, it'll be on the next zoning agenda. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, ZBA case 45 dash 20, 445 Van Rowan Road. Applicant Miley Nugent, Newian pursuant to section 2 dash 29176. The applicant is seeking a major home occupation permit in order to operate a nail salon at the above referenced property.
Miley, are you there?
Are you there, Miley?
Okay, if you want to, just go ahead and explain to the board what you're seeking. Board, I just want to let you know you had this case, a case similar to this before you, a couple of months ago. The same applicant was applying to have a major home occupation, the same as this one, at a property on Herkimer Road. She was looking to purchase. However, it has been sold. So she is now seeking to remain in her home, her own home and operate it out of there. So go ahead, Miley, explain to them what you're looking to do.
Hi, this is actually Kim, her daughter.
Okay.
It's just a little easier for me to speak if that's okay with you guys.
Perfect fine.
So my parents or my mom has been on for 20 something years now. Um, with the pandemic happening and everything, we've been trying to look for other options to keep our business going. And she was originally looking at the house on Herkimer, as you had said, but upon further review, we ended up losing the sale of the house. So we just, we decided as a family or she did, we were going to try and actually operate it out of our own house. Um, she plans on only being the only person operating out of the, the space. Um, it has its own personal bathroom. There's going to be two pedicure chairs as listed in your paperwork, only sometimes mothers and daughters like to come together, but she plans on only taking a client at a time. Only which is pretty much all that's really happening right now. And with, because it's slowed down. Um, our parking space, our driveway was already extended four years ago. So it actually provides more parking space, as you can see in the picture. That is our three family cars just parked out there. This way, it's not going to disturb any of the neighbors as far as street parking is concerned. She also doesn't plan on putting any signage up or anything, just because she doesn't want to put it out there. She is what, she basically wants a one and nail salon out of the area of our house. Our previous garage before it was renovated when we bought the house.
And as you see, she kind of did a mockup of what it would look like. This would be, I believe, the nail station along with two pedicure chairs, uh, here.
So we're going to have one nail station and two pedicure chairs?
Yes.
Because sometime the pedicure chair, it broke, you know, this and that. So we have to have, you know, one extra. And sometime the mother and daughter come together. Sometime husband and wife, they come together, you know?
So there's no other like nail salon, no other space available? Have you tried looking for other locations?
No, I just run a semi retire. So I only want to do like few people a day. Because like, you know, you stop so long, so you got auto write it and everything. So I cannot work too much anyway.
She's trying to slow down on her. Do, so.
Okay, no, no, no signage, correct?
No signage.
So I do have, I do, I would like to show you, um, she has, she has gone around and selected, it says, by signing below, I have been informed and given my blessing approval from Miley when to open a nail salon at her residence.
I don't think it's coming from.
I don't know, Joe. Hold on one second.
Wow.
Okay, let me continue. I was explaining that this would be a business where it would be by appointment only in order to limit traffic flow. I was also explaining that parking would be provided as the residence already has a wide end driveway. Therefore, street parking will not be an issue. And it has been signed by multiple members of the neighborhood.
Okay.
So, um, however, we have also received, um, to the city of Utica Department of Urban Economic Development, this letter is in regard to zoning variance or special permits. Your sign does not want to say 45 Van Rowan Road, Utica, New York, 13502. We do not want a nail salon business on Van Rowan Road. We are concerned about excess traffic overnight as many of us are over 65 years old. Chemicals used in conjunction used in a nail salon. Several of these names are on Miley's list. So they have duplicated signing the papers. We also have a letter. To whom it may concern, we are writing this of our concern with the proposed in our neighborhood. Came around a couple of months ago. He did not explain that she was closing her business, big lots in North Utica and opening a new salon at 445 Van Rowan Road. He stated she will possibly be having a few friends and family members in her entire clientele. This is when did not state that she was converting part of her home into a business within our residential neighborhood. We have numerous families that walk especially for physical, mental wellbeing and said that the business week and open eight hours plus per day. COVID 19. Can you mute your telephones, please? I'm reading this. Thank you. Said that the business would be open six days a week and open eight hours plus per day. We are very concerned with the COVID 19. We are very concerned with the COVID nineteen.
Logie, would you go grab me a beer?
Mike, can you please mute your telephone?
Yes, I'm just joking. Sorry, Patty.
Some people do not even wear masks. I do with them. We feel that appointments will overlap and customers will be waiting on our streets. She never stated she was moving her entire business to Van Rowan Road. There are multiple commercial locations all over the city where Mrs. Wen could have her move her business. What next? If we let this business open, someone else will want to open something that will bring unwanted traffic and possible COVID nineteen exposure. What about the value of our homes if we allow a retail business on our street? We strongly believe that the values of our homes will be negatively affected. If there is only one customer at a time, why do you need a six-car driveway that seems odd? Once the business is open, it will be very difficult to prove she is doing everything up to code. We already have a problem at the end of our street that the city cannot do anything until the courts are open because of the COVID nineteen pandemic. Please let them open the business in a proper location and not in our neighborhood. And that is from Joyce Thurstein. So as you will see, if you look at this list that are against, there are several on there that are on the list for.
Okay.
And vice versa.
Yeah.
So, um, so go ahead, board.
Well, this is definitely self-created. No doubt about that.
You're not looking at those as the criteria, you're looking at occupation.
Yeah. Is there anyone else on that's for or against all the new what we've just seen?
Would there be any changes to the exterior of the house at all?
No.
None?
None.
Okay.
Where the cars are parked, there used to be a garage now or or is that what's being converted to this business?
Previously, where the cars are parked in front of, before we bought the house, the whole house was good and we bought it as a floor car about seventeen years ago. When my parents bought the house, instead of keeping the garage, they just re-renovate their garage to a bonus room. And then we're just turn bonus room into the space for the nail salon.
Why is that driveway?
It hasn't, it hasn't been a garage in seventeen years.
Yes.
Okay.
So it looks like they're parking in front of the house.
Yep. The driveway was probably there before it was converted.
I believe she mentioned they expanded it four feet four months ago.
Four years ago.
Oh, four years ago, okay.
Driveway has been extended like that for a while just because we had cars that needed.
It's four years ago. What happened is about my son, he goes to New York for school, so he leave the car home. And my mother allows him to get there, so we move her into our house. So it's another car. And then me and my husband, it's two car, so we got four car. And every time my mother got some people come to visit her, when we start home, we're taking care of her. So it's all parked in the draw. So my driveway was so old too, we need to redone that. So my, me and my husband said, okay, why don't we do it, you know, a little bigger? So in fact, we have guests come over, it doesn't bother other people because, you know, our street at one sometime if you park on the road, it's not good. Some people back out from their driveway. It's not really good. That's why we decided to make it a little bigger. And four. Already passed three.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak in regard to this application?
I would.
Is your name?
It's Gail Bowen. I live across from Miley.
I'm sorry, Gail, your last name was?
Bowen, B-O-W-E-N.
Thank you, I'm sorry. And your address?
I'm across the street at four-four-two Van Rowan.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I don't see any problem with Miley opening this salon. I have been in her home, so I know where she's talking about. It certainly isn't going to give anybody else a problem. I've talked to her personally to see what she was really planning to do. She's not capable of taking on a big business anymore, so she's only going to have a few appointments a day, if even that. As far as the paperwork that you're getting about these people that are suddenly going against this, I really know where it's coming from. And if that person is so concerned about our COVID, then he shouldn't be going door to door and talking to us without a mask. So for myself and my neighbors that I've talked to, we don't have a problem with it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like?
Hi, this is Marlene O'Connor. I'm at four-four-nine.
Marlene, what's your address?
Four-four-nine Van Rowan.
Thank you.
I agree with everything Gail said. She's absolutely right. Miley and her family, they keep their house immaculate, the front. It's beautiful. You don't even see a leaf in their driveway. I don't, I don't have a problem with it at all.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Would anybody else like to speak? Okay, go ahead.
All right. Well. Any board, any thoughts on?
Hello, Joe? Joe, this is Councilman Beatrice.
Yes, sir.
Can you guys hear me okay or no?
Yes, we can. Go ahead. Councilman.
Yes, I'm sorry, I was, you were on mute. Thank you. The only thing I could, I could tell you is I understand there's people on both sides of the fence here. And I've known, I know both parties. The only thing I could say is, as a, Miley's been a taxpayer in North Utica for twenty years. And I can just say that I know she takes good care of her property. So I understand both sides of the fence, but you know, I'm listening to other people comment. I talked to the people who wrote the letters in. So I'm going to put, I'm going to put this judgment onto the board. And you guys make the decision that you think is proper. But I just know as, as a taxpayer of the city, the, she has done her justice. And she, it seems like she was already approved on Herkimer Road. So, you know, I don't, I do understand on both sides, but I have people on both sides. So it's, I'm gonna, I'm gonna support whatever decision you guys make, okay? Thank you.
Okay, let's see, the proposed hours were Monday through Saturday, nine to five. Appointment only approximately two to three hours per day. So nine to five is more than two to three hours per day.
Yes, that's true, but sometimes, especially now COVID times, there are days where, where there's only been with three customers. So she's saying nine to five is operating, I may only have one or two appointments during that time. Because you have to also go by the clientele when they're available.
I think you meant actually two to three customers per day.
Yes, I'm sorry.
All right. Okay, any motions, board?
I make a motion to approve.
And how you want to do it, Wendy, maybe one customer at a time?
Yeah, I would say one customer or as in like they say, mother, daughter, because me and my mother go get our nails done too, but.
So no, no more than two customers at a time?
No more than two customers at a time. And just try not to overbook.
Can I interject? Can we put one appointment at a time? Rather than.
Right, that's, that would be one appointment at a time, Wendy.
Sure.
Okay.
No more than one appointment at a time.
Anything else?
Um, no, that's it. I mean, they've got ample parking for the one car that will bring their customer in. So just try to make sure you don't overbook.
I'm trying to make a comment here. Can someone hear me?
Who is?
For some reason, it wasn't coming through. This is someone on Van Rowan Road that's making a comment.
But we asked several times.
We get, we say.
You guys didn't hear me, I had to redial in. I had to redial in for some reason, couldn't hear me.
Oh, slow on the.
Name then.
Scott Wallerstein.
Scott, can you spell your last name for me?
W-A-L-E-R-S-T-E-I-N.
And your address?
Y four thirty-seven Van Rowan.
Van Rowan, okay. All right, go ahead.
We don't understand, and there's numerous people that signed it, why she can't have a business somewhere in Utica. Why do we have to have it on Van Rowan Road? There's no businesses here. It's a small residential area. Her driveway is enough to fit eight cars in, and I have no problem with them, please. It's not a problem with the people. It's putting a business on my road. Okay, and that's why when she came around over the early summer, she really didn't explain that she was closing Miley's over in Big Lots. She just said she was going to be doing some work.
He wrote that letter.
In her home. What's that?
No, we're only listening to you. Go ahead.
Go ahead, sir.
I don't understand why they can't find a place to do business outside of Van Rowan Road. This is, there's no commercial businesses here. Why do we have to have one here? Okay, and I understand there's people that, that, how can I word this? Like I said, they have a beautiful home, they keep their house nice, that's not the issue. It's having a business on Van Rowan Road. There's no reason for it. There's no reason for it. They tried to buy a home in her, on Herkimer Road. It fell through, so obviously they're willing to make a move. Maybe they need to find a place that has a different house somewhere else that can put a nail salon in. I have no problem with these people. That's not the issue. The issue is putting a business three houses, two houses down from my house. That's the issue. Okay, people that signed that, signed it during the summer, not understanding, and I know I'm repeating myself, not knowing or understanding completely what was happening, and now we do. And that's why we resigned that stating that we don't want them to open a business here. I am truly sorry that it didn't go through. The first time I had to redial in, but this is my concern. COVID nineteen is, is very strong. There's a lot of us that are over sixty years old. There's a lot of people that use this street to walk on. We don't need the traffic, which I mean, why do they need to be open six days a week? You know, nine to five or nine to six or nine to seven, whatever it states, I don't understand why. If they're only going to have one or two people a day, that's a different story. And how are we supposed to monitor that it's a mother and daughter in there? Why do they need two stations, two pedicure stations or two nail stations and however they arranged it? But I just wanted to voice my opinion and it has nothing to do with them, please. They've been perfect neighbors. I don't disagree. So thanks for listening. And obviously, we got to listen to whatever the thing says, but there is people on the street that don't want a business here. Thank you.
Hello?
Hello, this is Councilman Beatrice again?
No.
Go ahead, Joe.
Okay, this is Councilman Beatrice. So I'm listening to both sides of the argument here, and I, I see, you know, I'm, I'm in, I don't want to stop commerce from Miley, and I understand the residents of the other people that are against this. Maybe, maybe a solution could be instead of six days a week and instead of nine to five, you could go four or five days a week with set hours, you know, maybe one to five or maybe on Saturday you go from nine to five or the busier days and, and just, just so it, it can be cut down. And again, you guys are the board who makes the decision. I'm just looking out for all the residents and to make everyone happy. It's just an idea. It's maybe something you guys want to look at. So I just, I don't know how you feel about that, Joe. But, you know, nine to five, six days a week is kind of a, is kind of a big window where I would see, you know, and like I say, I'm not, I'm not against this at all. I understand it. I'm actually, I think it's a good thing. But I just think that if we, you know, maybe got with Miley and got with the neighbors so everybody can be happy here. We, we do have, we have people for this, we have people against it. And I want to, I want to have a resolution to make everybody happy. And I think the resolution would be maybe, maybe four or five days a week instead of six and maybe four or five hours instead of eight. It's just, just an idea. And like, you know, it's just what I got to say. So you guys decide what you want to do.
All right, thank you, Councilman.
Hello?
Very good.
Hello, I, hello, I also had to dial back in. I missed some of what's going on. Can you folks hear me now?
Yes, what is your name?
Oh, thank you for the time. So I am a neighbor of Miley.
Your name?
Your name and address. Whoa, sir, your name and address, please.
Yes, sure. My name is Jason Cruz, C-R-U-Z. And, and I live in four-four-seven Van Rowan, right next door to her. I've, I've known them for over ten years. And they keep their property very well-kept. They're very good people. And I have nothing but great things to say about them. I have no problem at all for Miley to do her business next door. I'm actually for it. So if that puts away anything being that I'm right next door to her. So I'm for it.
Okay, thank you.
Everybody who is for it understands who Miley is. And she is a great person and whatever you guys decide is great, but I'm hoping that you guys would approve her.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Now, Miley, we're done with, we're done with the discussion part of the meeting.
Hold on.
You realize you're.
Joe, hold on for a second. Let's just make sure that we don't have any other people who had difficulty with the streaming. Is there anybody else who would like? Is there anybody else who would like to speak in this, in regard to this application at four forty-five Van Rowan Road? This is the last, the last chance and last opportunity.
Okay, all right. Miley, you realize, you realize you're asking to put a business in a strictly residential neighborhood. And the neighbors do have a legitimate concern for that. So I think some concessions are going to have to be made here. Like limiting the number of hours that you're going to, if you are truly going to be retired or semi-retired.
Yeah, we're willing.
That's why you're doing this, right?
Yes, she's willing to can, to terms and cut down on the days and hours.
We're going to have to cut down on the hours and give up maybe a day or two.
Yeah.
Now, what'll work for you? Like a nine to one, a one to five, a nine to twelve?
Well, Joe, I, I, uh, it's a way we could put a limit, an amount of time tickets per day. I think it's going to be difficult to pick a certain time. Obviously, people were trying to pay, uh, and, and to see this type of business.
Well, I think like what the other neighbors said is we won't know, we won't be able to determine how many clients she has in the course of a day. But if you know that the business is closed at one o'clock or twelve o'clock. What, what, they take?
Go on.
That's what you said. I'm here. All right, go ahead, Ned, Ned, what do you?
No, so I was, I was suggesting that, but I, I see, I see a point where it would be how to control that, how that could be difficult, so yeah. Let's see if we have a.
Let's see if we have a, a compromise. Uh, that would work for now. Miley, you determine the hours of operational work for you.
Uh, she's willing to concede down to five days a week and maybe nine to two. The, the the problem is she would have to figure it out differently days, so you could give some variable times for people, you know, who wanna get done before work, or who wanna get it done after work.
After work, all right, okay, well.
No, no, I'm okay. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
I'm okay with some concessions, but it needs to be a set concession. You know, four days a week, five days a week, from nine to twelve, nine to one, whatever, or one to five. There's no
Who's speaking now?
Who is this?
Van Rowan. This is Wallerstein.
Okay, but we'll determine this. The zoning board will determine it. Thank you, though.
I thought that was somebody on the board.
Okay, go ahead, board.
All right, Wendy, we're back to you. Go ahead, make your motions.
Okay, um, I'm fine with approving. Um, if Miley, if you want, if you're okay with times, I know um, with times, my only thing was that when you book someone, not to give time between bookings so that you're not overbooked with people waiting. Um, that was my concern.
Um, we practice that at the nail salon. There's usually a time in between because we have to disinfect everything between people. So they're not booked back to back either, which is why period. You could have someone at nine o'clock, and then you wouldn't have anyone again until ten thirty, eleven o'clock. Sometime to three o'clock. Till three o'clock sometime.
Okay, so with me, I mean someone else trying to talk here. Okay.
Go ahead, Wendy.
So with me, I don't have a problem with your times, um, to, and the board approves, because Saturday, I understand it's a day when people aren't working. Um, Monday through Friday, I understand people wanna get there before work, but most people wanna get there after work, so the times, to me, I approve. I just wanna make sure you do not overbook people and have anyone waiting.
Yeah, we wouldn't wanna do that too. Our customers to be
But other than that, I, I approve the, the actual um, proposal. Any other boards?
Anybody wanna second that?
I'll second that.
What are the times she's open? What are the times she's gonna be open?
Who is this? For to speak.
This is Wallerstein again.
It's, it's only time for
Oh, we're done with, sure, but no, please, we're, we're, the discussion, the comment part of the, of the case is, is over with. Wendy, what was your motion?
A motion to approve, and that she just does not overbook.
So she has, she
Wendy, were you going five days or six days a week?
I was going with six days a week.
Wendy made the motion to approve what was said, with one appointment at a time, no parking on the street, no waiting, and with time between clients. Wanna second that?
I'll second that. Also, just no changes to the outside of the problem. I'll second that.
Who's that, Frank?
Frank.
Hold on, who's that, Frank?
Yes.
Second that?
Frank seconded, right? Yes.
Okay.
Okay, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. So it, it was approved.
Thank you to everyone. Thank you to the board for listening to our case. And we will, we will take everything you say and into play basically. There won't be overbooking. There'll only be one client or one appointment, be mother, daughter at a time, so.
Home occupation permit.
We have to get a permit through the codes department, so please contact them tomorrow or within the near future, okay?
Okay.
All right, have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Eddie, who is, you have to contact?
The codes department. It's three one five, seven nine two, zero one, six three.
Zero one, six three. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Wendy. Good luck.
Thank you.
Write it down so you don't lose it.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Is Mr. Panetta still with us? ZB A case forty six twenty, five twelve to five fourteen, Maindenville Street. Applicant Richard Panetta pursuant to section two days two nine sixty seven. The applicant is seeking an area variance in order to construct a shed at the above referenced location.
Okay, I apologize. It's not showing up on my screen. If you could just wait one second, I will be right back and adjust this. If you wanna go ahead and speak about it, go ahead. I will be right back.
Uh, I'm looking to put a shed, a hundred and twenty square feet shed, um, on the property. It's four feet from the back, um, uh, the back line of the property, because we're trying to take advantage of a, a cement slab that was, there must have been previously had been a garage on there. So we wanted to put the, sit the shed on top of the garage and the, the shed, the the shed on top of the slab, and it's actually all the way to the back of the property. So we're gonna put the shed as far forward on the slab as we can. We're also in the process of consolidating the two properties, five twelve and five fourteen. Five twelve is a vacant lot um, that we also own. And we've had some problem with the consolidation because about a year ago, we were trying to sell the property and got down to the closing, but the sale never happened, but for some reason, it got recorded at the city in the other people's name. So my lawyer is trying to correct all of that, so we can consolidate the property.
Okay, so now you can see, I apologize, the photos are a little fuzzy. But here is the lot and the house, and he's thinking to put a shed back behind that driveway area. Is that correct, Mr. Panetta?
Yeah, it's all the way to the back of that property. And what you see there is a structure, it's a four stall garage that's on the house that belongs to the house behind us. Um, and that's on Robert Street, that house.
Okay.
So this, this slab, the garage, there must have been two garages that were like right back to back with each other, but our garage is gone. And so we're left with that cement slab that you can see in that picture. We wanted to put the shed on that slab.
Okay, Mr. Panetta, there's a, is that a box or something right next to the slab?
Yeah, that's where we wanted to put the, that's right on the slab. That box is sitting on the slab.
Okay, so that's, that's what he's referencing, board.
Yeah, okay. Ten by twelve. Gonna construct it. What type of siding? With what type of materials? What are we gonna use here? It's a, it's a metal shed. A metal shed, okay. Yeah. I missed that part, all right. Okay, I don't have any questions. Board?
What type of door would be using?
Uh, it, it's the, you know, it's a, it's a shed kit. It came together, so it's like a, a door that slides apart.
Okay.
Anyone here for? Again?
Joe, hold on one second. Let me just make sure that everybody can, has the ability to speak on the screen. I think I unmuted everybody who's left. Okay, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve it. Second. Scott's second. Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. You're all set, Mr. Panetta?
Okay.
Shed permit?
Mr. Panetta, you'll have to, like you said, go through with the consolidation process. And since uh, finished, you can go ahead and get a shed permit through our codes department.
All right, we're working on all of that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a great evening.
Thank you, good night, all. Adjourn the meeting. Meeting is adjourned. Yes, Patty?
Board, I just wanna um, remind you that we have changed the meeting dates for November and December. I sent an email regarding this Tuesday, uh, November seventh and December fifteenth, so you may wanna put that on your calendar.
Yeah.
Other, other than have a great eve
Thanks.
Is the Christmas party gonna be at the December board meeting, Patty? Are we gonna be
Is that, that's not gonna be virtual, is it?
Yeah, good luck with that.
The perk line on, on Van Rowan Road.
All right, good night, all.
Night.
Bye, everyone.